And I'll ask our city clerk for a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor John Harabedian.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem John Caposha.
Here.
Councilmember Asher Arismande.
Present.
Councilmember Jean Gosh.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a Corbin May conduct city business.
Thank you very much. Please stand. Mayor Pro Tem's going to lead us in the pledge and invocation.
Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. I ask you to remain standing. I'm going to have a really, well, this is our last council meeting for the year, and so just want to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and I'm going to just read a very short poem for the holiday spirit. This is by Henry Wadsworth Longfellow. Then pealed the bells more loud and deep. God is not dead, nor doth he sleep. The wrong shall fail, the right prevail, with peace on earth, good will to men. I told you it was going to be short.
Very good. Amen to that. Thank you. Okay, I have two amendments to the agenda. I want to amend to include a new presentation by the Sierra Madre Roast Food Association, and also to pull from the agenda item number four, and we'll move that to a future meeting. Is there any other proposed change?
Mayor, sir, if we could also move under item six, Resolutions nineteen sixty-seven and sixty-eight to the first meeting in January.
Got it.
Okay, I'll move to approve the agenda as proposed, as modified, as modified.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. And we will do a report out of closed session. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session this evening with the city attorney to review a matter of potential or anticipated litigation. Direction was provided to the city attorney, and no action was taken in closed session. And that is the end of my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. The minutes. Anyone have any changes to the minutes from the November twelfth meeting?
No. I move to approve.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mayor and City Council reports. How about Councilmember Arismande?
Just congratulations to all of our volunteer and honorees and awardees from last Wednesday during our honors dinner. Special thanks to our staff for really putting together Job Well Done and supporting the efforts of our Chamber of Commerce. They did a really great job, great turnout, and it was just nice to see our awardees, including our staff, to be celebrated with their families and their friends. Oh, and also, I think we haven't met since our prayer breakfast at the women's, at the Women's Club, and it's one of my favorite events throughout the year, and I still am trying to get the quiche recipe that I haven't gotten yet. But really great turnout, and congratulations to Women's Club for that event.
Ditto to what you just said. I do look forward to that prayer breakfast every year in the Women's Club. It was packed. I mean, it was absolutely packed this time. Hard to get a seat, and it was just a wonderful event, so ditto's.
Nothing to report.
Yep, I'll just echo both of those comments. Nothing to report. We'll open this up for public comment for items not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Barry Ziff, and I'm here to announce to you the One Book One City for February twenty twenty. And as you can see before you, you have a special treat. Besides the flowers, you have some hot sauce, and that hot sauce is due to the book that we're going to be reading. The book that we're reading is Father Greg Boyle, who was a founder of Homeboys Industry, and that's the largest gang intervention program in the whole world. And what's in front of you is a product that they put together. The name of the book is Barking to the Choir, and in this book, he shares in a very compassionate and transformative way on how they have helped people's lives so they change from being gang members to fully functioning people in our society. It's a very uplifting story, and they've really changed the lives of many people. Some of the activities that are going to be included in February include a tour of the Homeboys Industries, a presentation by the author, Father Boyle, and we're going to have a film. It's called Scared Straight, Twenty Year Documentary. It recalls individuals like the Homeboys who had problems and issues and how they transformed their lives. And this documentary won two Academy Awards as well as numerous Golden Globes. We're also having our regular book club meeting, and we're also having an open reading, hopefully a play regarding this issue. Thank you. Hope to get you involved in our book for February.
Great. You, Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor Harabedian, and Mayor Pro Tem and council. To add to that, you all need to go down and see the tour of the Homeboys. It is very enlightening. Anyway, Gary and I are here to say a few words about our November fifth election. First of all, thanks to the city manager and the city council for their integrity to ask the citizens to initiate support for their, the tax increase instead of declaring a fiscal emergency, as so many other cities have done, since we all know the city is in good financial shape. Your trust in the citizens to understand this issue is a no-brainer, and the citizens would support, you knew that the citizens would support this to enhance our city government. There were ten of us who circulated the petition, and to them, we want to thank you, and for all the hard work that it takes attending the meetings and going door-to-door, making phone calls, and writing notes. To the nine hundred and thirty citizens who signed the petition, to them, we thank for all of the hard work. And you know that you were supporting the community with your signatures. And the unheard of, over eighty percent of the votes that said yes to a tax raise, that's unheard of. It's just amazing. So it demonstrates how much all of you care for the wonderful, our wonderful community, and for the services that the community provides. So thank you very much.
Just to reiterate what Pat said, a lot of work was carried on by the ten people that got the petition signed. Nine hundred and thirty signatures. There's a lot of numbers there. A special thanks to those who donated in other ways, and a special thanks to the Sierra Madre Police Officers Association, who are so generous in their understanding of the importance of having a good, safe community. Their support was very special to us. And thanks to the community, unlike some other communities who didn't recognize that Measure S was bringing in money from outside of the community, from people who come into our town for the restaurants and services. Some cities missed a great opportunity, and now next year, when it goes back on the ballot, those cities may lose out and not get the fundings that Sierra Madre has. So a special thanks to our community for being so alert to what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for items not on the agenda? Okay, well, we have a few presentations, and we're going to start with the first one, which is a fun one, which is a, the recognition of one of our businesses in town. And I remember when Sierra Fitness opened up twenty-five years ago, and it opened up right around the time of a small coffee shop called Starbucks. And I think both people kind of questioned, you know, is a gym going to be able to survive in Sierra Madre? And is this coffee shop, not called Bean Town, going to be able to survive? And they both did very well. So Sandy's here, and Sandy, if you want to come up, we'll, we'll present you with this certificate, and the city of Sierra Madre. And the whole council can come up. It's twenty-five years. We can all take a photo.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Yeah, congratulations. So it's, you get one of these nice certificates of recognition. It is really just saying commemoration of your twenty-five-year anniversary. It's Job Well Done, and congratulations on behalf of the city.
Thank you, thank you. But I do have to reiterate that I was there before Starbucks.
Yeah, yeah. Take a picture really quickly, then you can say a few words, and then.
The same.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
I was so honored when I got the call from the city saying that they were going to honor me for twenty-five years. A lot of people were skeptical in nineteen ninety-four. This town was pretty, wasn't a lot of businesses. Bean Town was a quarter of the size. I've been in the fitness industry since I was nineteen. I'm only thirty now, but anyways. So I've done a lot of things, and I just wanted to come and help the baby boomers, but little did I know that I'm actually a baby boomer. I look at myself as that. To help people get healthy, there was no place for anyone to go that were coming up in age. In fact, Mr. Bob Hardaway is here, and he was one of my original clients, and he just turned ninety-two. So we have a lot, we've, I have amazing trainers. I've, I dedicated myself to only hiring the best in the field, and we, we were a specific gym, boutique gym, where it was non-intimidating, and I stuck with that all this time. It wasn't always easy. It's hard to be, be successful in a small business, especially in a small town. But I couldn't have done it, obviously, without my amazing staff, and I have some staff, actually, I was just talking to them. They've been with me for twenty-five years, which is amazing. And my staff just keeps growing. They're amazing. And then, obviously, the people in town, and we have a lot of people that come from downtown that, that support our gym. I'm honored. I feel so lucky every day to be able to wake up, live in this town, and run a couple of businesses, actually. And I've also, obviously, I opened up the juice bar originally. I have the Shabby Dogg, and I've employed so many of these people's children, too. So I have watched them grow up, and especially in summertime, when I come home from college, they're all knocking down my door because they need jobs, but it's been really, really a pleasure to be able to settle in Sierra Madre and try to make it a healthier, healthier town. But again, I couldn't have done it without all of these amazing people. And as you can see, we have a lot of support here. We're having an open house right now from six to nine. Food, beverages, and I'd love whenever you guys get done. Everyone's welcome to come and share in our celebration. So please stop by the gym on, at Twenty North Baldwin. Thank you again. Thank you.
That's great. Well, congratulations again, and thank you for coming. And our next presentation is from the Sierra Madre Friends of the Library, and this is going to be about a very exciting project relating to a new library. So I know there's a couple of speakers, so you guys can come up and, and have at it.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start us off, and with all due respect, Mayor Harabedian, we're also a fun presentation.
No, this is very fun. Yeah, yeah, no, this is good. This is also fun.
I'm Julie Brady, the president of the Friends of the Sierra Madre Library, and I'd like all of the friends to stand up to just show you, we got a lot of support here.
Yeah, we're all friends, we're all friends of the library, right?
We're out there. We've been founded since we were nineteen fifty-three, and they wanted to build a new library. So, oh, that seems to be a theme, and so in conjunction with the Friends, our Board of Trustees and our foundation decided that we wanted to do a drawing from a great architectural firm, P B W S, and we wanted them to create an ideal twenty-first century plan. So with much excitement, I'd like to introduce our architect, Kirsten Benau, for a very exciting and fun presentation.
Thank you, Julia. Thank you for hearing our presentation tonight. I'm going to try and go through this very quickly. I know you guys have had a chance to see this information, but I'll just run through the highlights, and then if you have additional questions, I'll be happy to answer your questions after. So we'll start with the site plan. This is the proposed site plan for the new building. It's at the same location as the existing library. Sierra Madre Boulevard is on the right side of this plan, and Mariposa is on the left side of this plan. The existing library, this tree here is one of the existing oaks. There are several more existing oaks. And if you are familiar with that existing library, it comes right up next to these oak trees, very, very close. And so this new plan sets the building back a little bit to give those trees plenty of space, protect them during the construction process, and create a larger entry garden. So the main features of the site include this entry court on Sierra Madre Boulevard, which allows for multiple types of seating and multiple types of use, an event garden down in the parking lot level, which would be connected to a community room, and then parking at the back of the lot. There are a total of thirty-nine parking spaces, thirty-one here at the back, which are accessed off of Mariposa, and then eight additional parking spaces on an angle along Sierra Madre Boulevard. So that there are parking at both levels of the site for different lengths of use. Here are just a few examples of the drought-tolerant landscaping that we would propose, the drought-tolerant planting, which is in keeping with everyone's water goals, and some examples of potential site furnishings. There are lots of interesting site furnishings that can be used to provide lots of different ways to use those exterior spaces. And a few examples of site pavement treatments that we are looking at using, and some of the built-in type features like raised planters, benches, and architectural trellis. The building itself here, these floor, floor plans are oriented with Sierra Madre Boulevard at the bottom of the plan, so north is actually down, and the parking area at the top of the plan. The major way that we have organized is to allow for staffing with as few as two to three people to help keep operational costs low. So in order to achieve that, we've grouped all of the primary library functions on the upper level, which is at the Sierra Madre Boulevard level, and then community functions and archives are located on the lower level at the parking lot. So we'll go through this a little closer up so you can see. So the street-level floor plan, which is at Sierra Madre level, so you would enter off of Sierra Madre Boulevard, and the, this level is organized around what I like to call the central hub, which is the main entry space, the main service desk, and then a stairway with a glass enclosure. This hub allows for patrons to enter the library and see basically every space within the library so that it allows people to navigate the library with ease and save staff time because they're not pointing people to the correct locations. So the main collection and reading areas are on the east side of the building over here. The children's areas are on the west side of the building, and then the staff area is here at the south, overlooking the parking. On the lower level, which is at the parking lot level, on the east side is the community meeting room, which seats about a hundred people and chairs, and the Friends spaces, Friends, the Friends of the Sierra Madre Library. Book sales and fundraising fund all of the programming that happens in the library. So we wanted to better accommodate that activity within the space. So this side is basically community functions. And then on the west side are the archives. So we have the local history room, and then the archive storage. And then the gray spaces here off of the parking lot are just building utility spaces. For the architectural design of the project, we took inspiration from the mid-century modern sort of style of the existing building and wanted to draw on other references from that time. So the language of the building uses large expanses of glass, wood and stone, and low-slope roofs with clear-story windows. But glazing technology has far surpassed what it was mid-century, so we're looking at using more modern glazing technology, including structural glazing, which is shown here at the top, which allows for a much more transparent, large expanse of glass, and translucent skylights, which allow us to bring natural daylight into the middle of the building without the solar heat gain. So that helps our energy efficiency reduce the need for artificial lighting and reduce the cooling loads on the building. So we've done several renderings of what the building might look like, and so this is the view from Sierra Madre Boulevard. You can see the low-slope roofs that we've incorporated that are reminiscent of the existing building, except that they're sloped towards the middle instead of towards the outside. By sloping them to the middle in sort of a butterfly configuration, that allows us to help control the acoustics within the space. So instead of the sound reflecting from the children's room across the central core into the quiet reading space, the, the sound will bounce back down into the children's room and vice versa, although probably the sound's coming from the children's room and not the other way around. And here we've employed those structural glazing that I showed the photograph of to help provide a very transparent view from the library into that entry garden and out of the library to the mountains also. So as you approach the building from Sierra Madre Boulevard, you'll walk through this entry garden, which incorporates, as I said, multiple seating options, which allows for multiple types of use, including Y-FY. So this entry garden would be a twenty-four-seven space for the city of Sierra Madre. And from that entry garden, you come into this main lobby with a service desk, self-checkout, and then this glass enclosure here is around the stairs, which helps, again, to control the sound and the movement of sound within the library, but allow transparency so that people can find where they are. daylight into the middle of the building. From the parking lot side, from the south, this would be the elevation that you would see, this is the south side. There is again an entry from the south, so that anyone coming from the parking doesn't have to walk around the whole building as they do now. You come directly into the building. To the right, you see the community room here, which has operable glazing out into the community garden, or the event garden, which would be able to be used in conjunction with the community room for events. And drop off the, on the left here, you see the drop-off area, which is also the turnaround for fire trucks and an opportunity for people to do book returns or drop off, you know, middle schoolers who are using the library. As you enter from that lower, from that lower lobby, you come up the stairs inside of the glass enclosure, which again allows for the transparency to the spaces, but controls the sound transfer, because the, if there's an event in the community room downstairs, you don't want the sound traveling up into the library. So as you come up these stairs from the lower level, you are sort of see every space within the library. And then this is the reading area at the north part of the main collection space. And here you see that structural glazing, and how you can see out into the entry garden and out to the mountains. This is the main collection space from the south end looking north, and as you can see, there's a lot of stacks, but the stacks, the collection remains the same size in terms of numbers of items, but it incorporates more options for seating, reading, working, computing, and group meetings, including small group meeting rooms here. And then this is a view of the children's room, which again keeps the collection about the same size in terms of numbers of items, but makes the books more accessible to the children by using lower shelving and incorporates additional seating and storytime areas. So we have conducted an early estimate for this, for this project. What you see is a construction cost. At this phase, there are many assumptions that are included in a construction cost, because we haven't designed everything completely. You can't, you know, it hasn't been engineered, and so there are many things that we have to make assumptions on as we do the costing. So you'll see that there's a significant contingency included in that, that's to cover those unknowns. And there's also a significant escalation built in. We included 36 months of escalation. This is a crystal ball number. As we all know, the escalation can go up faster or slower, but 36 months would be to the midpoint of construction, assuming a year before the project gets a green light, and then a year of design and city approval, or county approvals, since I believe the county does your building and safety review, and then a year to the midpoint of construction. So that's how we got that number. This number does not include soft costs, which would be things like engineering and architects' fees, testing and inspection, permits and those associated fees, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, any bookcases, chairs, things that are not built into the building are part of furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And additionally, I believe someone raised the question of financing costs and, you know, underwriting costs, those are not included. So this number that you're seeing is really the hard construction cost. Okay? So that is the extent of my presentation. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Maybe after the other speakers we'll come back to. Thank you very much. Excellent.
Well, Kirsten gave you the what, and I, my name is Rich Proctor. I'm a member of the Library Trustees and also a member of the Library Foundation. I'm here to give you the why. Why we, the people of Sierra Madre, are going to do this. As a member of the foundation, the foundation has been meeting for about a year, and it's a volunteer organization, and we've been trying to figure out the best thing to do for the community. And that has allowed me to go into the history of the city and the history of the library. And here's something I know about the people of Sierra Madre. They are visionary, courageous, and generous. Let me tell you how I know that. Because back in 1953, they had, the people of Sierra Madre had a choice very similar to the one we have right now. They had to make a choice about what to do about a building that was built in 1887. It's a wonderful building, served the city for about 60 or 70 years, and it had come to the end of its useful life. They had a number of options of what they could do. And what they did was they envisioned a library that would serve the community for the next 60-plus years. They had a number of choices of what they could do. They made the courageous choice to commit to building that library, and then they decided to pay for that library. And every time any member of the community walks into that library, they can thank those people who said, "We're gonna build a place that's going to last long after we've passed away, because that's who we are." We believe in our community. We want a space where people can come in with their children, those children can get a love of reading that will last their entire lifetime. We want a place that's going to be the beating heart of the community, and that place has served us all these years. Now, one more thing they did. They laid down a marker. They said, "This is what we did, so that when you in 2020 have to figure out what you're going to do, we want you to know that the people of Sierra Madre are visionary, courageous, and generous. And what, what you need to do is build a place that will be the new beating heart of the city, that will serve the community for the next 60 years, long after we have passed from the scene, and that will cause the people of Sierra Madre to be happy and proud of their community." So that has been our goal. That's what I've learned about us. That's who we are, and this is what we're going to do. This time, I'd like to welcome Rob Stockley, who's gonna give you some of the logistics of how we're gonna do it. Thank you.
So, I get to do the how. So here we are. We have a number. It inspires me to want to go out and reread the book Undaunted Courage about the Lewis and Clark expedition, because I think we've got a daunting task ahead of us, but I believe we can do it. This vision of the library that you've seen in glorious pictures here tonight has always entailed asking the residents of Sierra Madre to approve a parcel tax, to invest in one of the most valued assets of our community, the place where we gather together so often. So I am here tonight to recommend and offer to organize a petition drive to place a parcel tax on the ballot in November 2020. The amount of the bond should be sufficient to fund the costs that we saw presented here tonight, as well as some of those soft costs that were referred to, so that we can deliver a completed building to the community. This total should be fine-tuned over the next 30 days, and we should have a more concrete number by then. I'd like to clarify the role of the Sierra Madre Library Foundation. I think we were talking a little bit at Cross Purposes last time we gathered together. The foundation is not a political organization. Its mission is to support the library through major gifts and individual donations, building an endowment for the library's future. The first task of the foundation will be to raise funds to furnish the new building. This campaign will commence upon approval of the parcel tax in November 2020, which will happen. Over the coming winter break, I will begin to recruit a committee to organize the petition drive, to place the parcel tax on the ballot, and then campaign for its passage. We believe this petition drive will give us a good read on community support, and then build a grassroots organization leading up to the vote. And so we're here to sort of unveil our, our plan and give you our idea of the roadmap to achieving this goal. So if you have any questions for any of us, we'll be glad to answer those.
Well, thank, any other speakers, or is that it? Well, that was fantastic. You know, everyone did an amazing job. I think that the presentation of the planned new library is really awe-inspiring. I mean, somewhere you really wanna go, and it's, it's really amazing. So well done on that. I will, I'll open this up for questions. I don't know if we wanna just have a free-flowing, you know, this is a presentation, not a discussion item, but any kind of burning questions or things that folks wanna ask?
Just some questions. Thank you again for the presentation. And I know the costs were not baked in, but I just wanted to know, and I know we have 30 days where we're hopefully fine-tuning it, but an idea for some of those soft costs and what we're looking at. And I think that's an important piece, especially if this does go out to the residents. We should have a number, a real hard, hard number, that includes the soft costs.
Okay. So just as a rule of thumb, the soft costs, somewhere around 20% of the construction costs. And we will work with our estimator to provide some more clarity to those. But that, that 20% is sort of a ballpark of what that would be. So we'll, we'll get farther down the road on that.
And then I think I, I think I heard Mayor Stockley saying that the, for the equipment, there's an intent to fundraise? Is that what I heard?
The furnitures.
Furniture?
Yeah, I think that would, that would include things like computers and other not-so-durable parts of the library. I think our feeling is the parcel tax is gonna be associated with a 30-year bond. So we want to allocate those costs that are gonna be amortized or used by the community over the next 60 years to that figure. But the things that are gonna wear out over time, we feel like that's, that's the sort of thing that the organization can raise money for and complete, and we'll have time to conduct that campaign.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Go ahead. Do you have another one?
Just as a follow-up question, and again, I don't know if this has been thought through to this point, but given that it's a larger space, when you're looking at staffing costs and what it would take to staff a library this size, has, has any thought and discussion went into that, and any projections?
So granted, I'm not the librarian, but every, and Christine could answer your question also, but the, everything that we have designed is essentially to work with the library operations sort of at their current level. The existing library building is undersized for the services that are being provided. And as a result, there are some things like ADA deficiencies. The major areas where the square footage is increasing are actually the community room, which is staffed upon a need, a needed use, right, and would also be available to other community groups for outside use, in which case potentially the rental fee for the space would cover some of the staffing costs for that. And then the archive space, which is currently in the basement, and is grossly under, under, it's not sufficient for its use. So, and then the, the third area of increased square footage is really the Friends spaces, which the Friends is a sort of a separate organization. They staff their space through their organization. And as I mentioned, the reason for really incorporating all of that space is that their fundraising funds the programs that the library offers almost completely. So without their fundraising efforts, many of the programs that the library offers, they would not be able to offer. So those are the three major areas where the building's square footage is increasing.
Christine Smart, City Librarian. We do anticipate that, or and hope honestly, within the next few years, we will be able to serve the community to our full capacity six days a week. But at the current capacity that we have, the staffing for five days a week service, with some allowances for, we might need a little bit of additional janitorial services, for example, you might need additional cleaning services. We could continue and staff the building at our current level, but I would hesitate to say that we would not want more in the future to serve the community for opening Fridays, for example, which is a question that we get a lot. And we would need to add a little bit in providing the services of janitorial and custodial and all of that. So it, a little more, and then hopefully, hopefully we can open up again soon.
So Mayor, City Librarian's walking a tough line, and she, she did a very good job with her answer. What we have in the library design is offering three distinct elements, right? We have an upstairs, we have a downstairs, we have an outside area that'll be more functional. We now have two functioning entrances. We have new lines of service that we didn't have before. So the open space concept helps with what we see, but it doesn't, doesn't necessarily help with what we serve. So if the library is built, we would be bringing forward a recommendation for additional staff in the library. It doesn't have to be a point of contention. The worst thing I think a city could do was spend $15 million for the residents on a library and then not have sufficient staff to provide all of the amenities that go with the 21st century library. We also would intend to open up to, or return to our regular schedule under the new library. Again, we wouldn't build a new library to serve the residents and continue with our scaled-back model of service. So I think the dialogue from the city manager's standpoint is how would we pay for the new staff, not would we try and get by with the model that we have today? I do appreciate how Christine responded to that. Yeah, I'll just work really, do you have any questions? And then we'll...
No questions. I'm kinda up to speed on most of this. I've been sitting in on some of the foundation meetings for the last year, and been really impressed at the quality of people that have been working on this. And I wanted to congratulate the speakers tonight. I thought you guys did just a fantastic job of laying this out, but I don't have any questions at this time.
Great.
Yeah, just with regard to operational costs, is a new building, does, does it save us in operational costs, like with heating, air conditioning, or, or maintenance?
So there, one of the proposals in, in the building is to add solar to it, which would certainly save on the operational standpoint. We haven't had an opportunity to determine if we need the solar with the current solar array that we're proposing, so we may get some cost savings when we build that out, the spreading grounds. I do think almost any building would be more efficient than what we have in place. So yes, I think there would be some savings there.
Okay, then also, is the, the cost of deferred maintenance? We have not invested in the current building, and if, if this doesn't pass, then the city is going to spend a fair amount of money to fix that building. Does, if we thought of that as a, you know, if we amortize that over time, does that help with the operational costs?
So the, the first part's correct, Mayor Protem. The city has not appropriately maintained the library. The last cost, that's what I saw, I believe, is 1.6 or 1.8 million to put on a new roof, new windows, electrical, make it ADA compliant, fix the emergency exits. That is a cost that the city is gonna have to bear. It's not, not quite a sunk cost, because we haven't right budgeted for it or started expending funds on it yet, but I do think it would be fair for council to consider some of this as a cost avoidance for a cost that we would have to otherwise bear.
I have two quick questions. One is for the city attorney. When they, which I think the citizens initiative for the signatures is spot-on, because I think that's how you pass this, you know, you go out, you get these signatures, and I think that's really the key to this. Do they have to have within the petition the exact number of what the potential, you know, parcel tax would then, the math would be? In other words, what is the... Do they have to have within the petition, the exact number of what the potential, you know, parcel tax would then, um, the math would be? In other words, what does the petition have to say in terms of the exact cost of the project? Could it be a range? Um, from a legal perspective, is there anything that you can let us know as a council, but also them obviously in, in helping kind of put this together?
You, you do have to be able to, um, explain the actual likely impact on a parcel, like what would the tax be? There's a, lots of different cities have adopted these things, so it might be useful to look at a model of one that was successfully passed by another city recently. And for example, um, one of those is, uh, the city of South Pasadena, I believe, a couple of years ago, the Friends of the Library did a, uh, a successful parcel tax there to raise money for the library. And, um, and they did, uh, specify the amount of money they were raising and so when people voted on it, they did know, um, what their tax would be.
Okay. And do you remember if it was a range or if it was just a single number?
It's, it, uh, it's a single number.
Okay.
That, that is my recollection for the actual tax.
Yep.
In terms of, um, what you're going to spend the money on or how much you think you're going to raise, that, that can be a range or an estimate.
Hmm, okay. I mean, I think it's helpful for especially the citizens putting this together. Can they come and just ask questions of city staff before putting this together? Um, I think, I'm not sure the city can provide formal legal advice or anything like that, but can they come and talk to the city manager and you? If they have any questions?
Yeah, they can. And, uh, they can also, um, request copies, like make a Public Records Act request, or it doesn't even have to be that formal. I'm sure that if, uh, anyone were to call staff at South Pasadena or members of, or even the library, uh, the head librarian there, they'd be really happy to, um, pull together the compilation of documents that, um, were used in the successful ballot measure for that library parcel tax.
Yeah. Well, I think that'd be helpful. I mean, to me, this, you know, the project seems extremely exciting. Uh, it looks great, seems like we have the right team. Just getting, I think, that number, right, that final number of hard, soft costs, whatever the range is, and making sure that the petition, you know, adheres to previous examples from other cities. I mean, I think that's really the key in the next thirty days. So, you know, well done. Thank you guys so much for coming. I, really is exciting. I think everyone here, while, while they're watching it, seemed extremely excited. So, um, we appreciate you coming forward and then we're probably going to hear from you in, in a month or so. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And so, the last presentation is, uh...
Do you have any comments?
Uh, we typically don't have comments on presentations, um, but Dee, if you'd like to make a comment, you can make a comment.
All right, I, you're always going to make discussions, I just...
Yeah. It was a little bit more of a discussion than we planned, but, um, if you'd like to make a comment, Dee, I'd, I'd open the floor for anyone to make a comment. I mean, noting that we have a...
I just have a question.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. You can go.
Okay, well, I'm starting to hear you. Oh, just, uh, clarification on the, uh, the parcel tax. Is that just for the building? Because I know like Altadena, uh, they have a parcel tax, but that's to, to fund the operational library. So, is this, uh, is this straight, I mean, is a thought, just, this is to cover, is this the building of the library or is it the extensions that will also cover the, uh, main, or the ongoing costs, which offsets, you know, because it, it would come out of the, the city, we'd have to pay for it. So, it, it's a trade off. But I know I said in Altadena that they, they just had an election a short while ago to have, to fund the library. They've, they've done it for some period of time. That was my question.
Yeah, I think it's a good question, which we, we can, yeah, we, no, we can, we can address. I was just saying, if anyone else had a, a question, but go ahead, Ms. Smart.
Um, so we're not at this time, uh, the number that was presented is just for the building costs. I, I would hesitate to say one way or the other what the parcel tax will fully contain. Uh, we will have a better sense of the entire burden cost come January and bringing that back to council.
Great. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank you for, uh, offering to, to gather the signatures to put it on the ballot because I just think that is key to success here. I, you know, I've seen comments where, uh, the city is doing it to us again. So, this isn't the city council. This, this is the Friends and the Advocates for the Library putting this forth to your peers out there. And I just think that is so much more powerful than having the electeds here decide that this is needed and putting it on the ballot. So, I think you're off to a great start just with that concept right there. So, thank you for that.
Agreed. Okay. Uh, we'll see you in January. With the next presentation is the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association, and we have our princesses here. And so, we, um, I will allow them to come up and, and do what they do every year.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Potem, City Council. I'm Gwen Robertson. I am the Vice President of the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association, and we are just here to present this year's float, which you're probably well aware of, and to introduce our city representatives who are annually selected, they apply, uh, local individuals, all princesses this year, though it could be princes, uh, who will be riding on our float and representing it. So, we come to say thank you for your continued support and I will let them tell you a little bit about the float.
Good evening. My name is Malia Turan. I'm a senior at Pasadena High School. The theme of the rose parade is the power of hope, chosen by tournament president Laura Farber. The theme celebrates the strength and optimism and the belief that even, that the belief that hope makes even the greatest challenges possible. In Sierra Madre, we know that with a combination of hope and hard work, amazing things can happen, because we see this every year at the float barn. We know that what we will accomplish in the 2020 parade will be no different. The title of our float this year is Kalakiki Ola, which is Hawaiian for the dawning of a new day. For the second year in a row, our design has come to us from designer Jason Red Fox, who is inspired by the island philosophy. He hopes that the float will remind us that with each day, there's new opportunities for us to fill our life, ola, with hope and happiness. Right on the float will be the three of us dressed in clothes of traditional Hawaiian royalty, not grass skirts thankfully. We will be joined by two hula dancers on the float and ten more Hawaiian dancers who will dance the Hymenya Dance all the way down Colorado Boulevard.
Hi, my name is Clea Maori and I'm a senior at Alverno Heights Academy. So, this year marks the eighty ninth year that the city of Sierra Madre will be represented in the rose parade. Our all volunteer organization works hard year round to produce award winning floats. We are the smallest city to enter a float in the parade, but there's no doubt in our minds that we are the most spirited and optimistic. For anyone who has seen a float in person, you know that they are much bigger than they look on television. Our float will be forty-four feet long, eighteen feet wide and twenty-four feet tall, and wow, is it heavy. Rose parade floats are essentially moving sculptures with a base constructed from hand-shaped welded steel. Undecorated, the float weighs about twelve thousand pounds, which is a lot. But, people underestimate how much flowers, seeds and glue can really weigh. When the float is fully decorated, it will weigh approximately twenty-five thousand pounds. If that weren't enough, as you know, all rose parade floats have to be able to get under a freeway bridge that is sixteen feet, six inches high. The birds that will soar above our heads will fold down using hydraulic lifts for easy passage. There will also be a real waterfall, complete with mist, and the large tiki's will rotate ninety degrees so everyone can see the beautiful detail and design. If you look very carefully, there is also a turtle basking on the back of the float. And don't forget us. The three of us will be riding on the float just beneath the large tiki with a beautiful view of flowers and dancers, and not to mention the entire parade route.
Hi, my name is Jessie Franks and I am a junior at California School of the Arts. No rose parade float would be complete without flowers and boy, does this float have flowers. As you know, all rose parade floats have to be covered entirely in organic materials, which means the challenge every year is to imagine a floral canvas using only materials that grow. This year, our tropical paradise is covered in many, many different varieties. There will be eighteen enormous flower arrangements that will include anthrym, haliconia, birds of paradise and ginger, and accented by green monstera leaves and horsetail. The tiki's may look simple in design, but to show all of their details, they will be covered in walnut shell, light and dark lettuce seed, redwood bark, eucalyptus leaves and magnolia leaf, and decorated with anado seed, dried goji berries, ground sushi rice, corn milgrits, purple status, dried marigolds, yellow straw flower and four different varieties of orchids. The entire float will then be finished with a bottom deck of orange and yellow roses and accented with dendrobium and phalaenopsis orchids. Sounds stunning, doesn't it? Now, we sure hope that all of you will come see this in person and undertaking this complicated relies on many volunteers who believe in the power of hope and the promise of a new day. As one of only six floats left in the parade that are built and decorated entirely by volunteers, we would be nowhere without all the help, support and optimism of our community. A special thank you to Attitude Dress Shop here in Sierra Madre for our wonderful outfits. Now, as I mentioned, we need many volunteers to make this vision a reality and we hope that all of you will come out and help us. Our signup page and lots of additional information are on our website. Thank you so much for having us here tonight and we look forward to waving to you on New Year's Day.
Thank you so much. And really, really well done. It's, uh, every year, you know, the princesses are so impressive when they come up here and they speak to us about themselves and, and the float and, um, and you guys are ambassadors for the city, you know, on the first, so thank you for serving that capacity. And this is, this is very, I mean, this is, this is going to be a lot of work. So, it's beautiful and I can't wait to see it and help with it. And I think one thing we do every year is just, we as council members will show up and obviously pitch in, but anyone here or watching on TV, there's plenty of ways to help. You can donate and where can they send payment?
It's on our website.
It's on the website? So, you send it on the website?
It's online now.
And it's online? No, that is different. I mean, a couple of years ago was, you know, I think we sent in checks and then so, um, and also show up to volunteer, uh, not only putting flowers and, and things on the float, but selling merchandise at the booth, which I know the Mayor Potem does, uh, cooking, uh, everything. So, the best dates are between the twenty-sixth and the thirtieth? That's kind of the...
Deco.
Yeah, that's deco week. So, um, there's a lot of people that show up, you, you'd be surprised. If you go up there and volunteer, there's, there seems to be more people from outside of Sierra Madre that show up to help, right? In Sierra Madre. So, hopefully there's folks here, then, and folks watching that'll help, so.
Well, not only that, a lot of people from all over the country.
Yeah, they travel in.
People are visiting their relatives here in Sierra Madre. It's a big treat for them to come and help decorate our float. So, if you haven't thought of that yourself, consider bringing your relatives out.
Yeah, that's great. Well, thank you so much for coming. Thank you very much. And we'll proceed with the rest of our agenda, uh, our consent calendar. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items this evening. Item one A, consideration of resolution nineteen dash sixty-four approving certain demands. And item one B, consideration of resolution nineteen dash sixty-five approving certain demands. And that concludes, uh, public, uh, consent items. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on items one A or one B? And seeing none, open this up for public comment or questions? And seeing none, we'll bring it back. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
No second.
All in favor? Aye. And that is unanimous. We'll go on to item number two, consideration of urgency ordinance fourteen eighteen U of the City Council regarding the second unit ordinance.
Okay, I'm, I'm up. Um, uh, so, uh, what's before you tonight is an urgency ordinance and the reason why it's being brought as an urgency ordinance is, uh, Governor Newsom signed into law three different bills, um, which, uh, modified the state regulations, the existing state regulations regarding the, um, development of an accessory dwelling unit. Those regulations will go into effect on January first, twenty twenty, and so it is necessary for, which will nullify any local ordinance that is inconsistent with the new law. Um, the city has had an ADU ordinance on its books for a number of years, uh, but to be compliant with the new law, we have had to suggest some modifications and some tweaks to it. It is in the form of an urgency ordinance, which means that if you approve this tonight, it will, uh, it will be read and adopted and effective all on the same evening. Some of the highlights of the changes in the law is, uh, the state has now specified that there are two different kinds, they've really clarified. Based on size, there's now something, uh, called out as a junior ADU or a JADU. And, uh, uh, and it's really a subset of an accessory dwelling unit, uh, with some differences. A JADU can only be developed, uh, as part of an existing dwelling unit. They can't be a separate structure. They have to be attached to the existing primary structure and they're small. They're somewhere between two hundred and twenty square feet, but not exceeding five hundred square feet. They, uh, may contain an efficiency kitchen, not a full kitchen, and a JADU can share a bathroom with the primary residence. Um, that's pretty much all you need to know about a JADU. The only time you're going to see them developed is inside as part of an existing dwelling unit. Um, some of the changes regarding the accessory dwelling unit, which will also be reflected in our, the, uh, ordinance amendments that are before you tonight, include, um, the state now, uh, requires that they can be up to sixteen feet high. So, previously, Sierra Madre had a fifteen foot high restriction on the development of an ADU. So, now it's up to sixteen feet high. And, um, one of the biggest changes is the parking requirements. Um, uh, it's, it's an easy way to develop an accessory dwelling unit on one's property has been to convert an existing structure such as a garage. Uh, and prior to the change in state law, if you converted a garage, which was necessary for your primary structure and therefore took away all the parking from your primary structure because you've converted your garage to an ADU, you would have to also, um, replace that parking. The state has done away with that requirement entirely. So, uh, if, uh, someone converts a garage to an ADU, they no longer have to replace the parking for the primary unit on site. They still have to, uh, provide one parking space for the ADU. Uh, and that's one of the major changes. Another major change in the law is the state has removed the, um, uh, the requirement that the owner of the property must occupy one of the properties. So, that is now gone. With the exception of that junior ADU that I had mentioned earlier, that just makes sense because the junior ADU is actually a part of the, of the main house. So, you do have to have, uh, the owner occupying the main house for a JADU. Um, another change, uh, for multifamily zoning properties, you may have up to two ADUs on site, whereas, uh, single family dwelling, you can only have one ADU. That's been, that's been the law, that did not change. So, for example, if you have a guest house on your property already, while you could convert it to an ADU, you couldn't keep both the guest house and then develop an extra ADU, because you can only have one, uh, for a single family dwelling. But for multifamily, you can have up to two and, uh, there's a, a complicated, um, provision in the law for a multifamily, uh, dwelling unit, like an apartment complex, for example. And, uh, there is now the ability to take kind of the dead space within that building, uh, the space that's non-living space, things like hallways, uh, the laundry room, maybe a rec room, anything that hasn't been turned into living space. And now, under the new provisions of the law, you are permitted as a developer to convert all that non-living space into additional ADUs, but only if you stay within the building envelope. Um, and you also cannot exceed, uh, twenty-five percent. So, for example, if you had an existing apartment dwelling with thirteen units and, um, you wanted to convert the hallways and the laundry room into additional units, you could create three more, as long as you stayed within the building envelope. So, these are just some of the nuances of the changes in the law and the ordinance captures all of these so that it will be compliant with state law. It is friendly to the development of accessory dwelling units. We count accessory dwelling units toward our, um, whenever possible, toward our affordable housing goals. And that's another change in the law. The state has affirmatively stated that it... The state has affirmatively stated that accessory dwelling units may be counted as affordable units in the moderate category. Of course, if you can show that a particular unit should fall within, um, low income, you could count it as low income. I think that's, those are the, kind of the flyover highlights of the changes in the law. And I guess the last thing that I would say is that, just as before, the approval of an application for an accessory dwelling unit is considered ministerial. It's not discretionary. We're really looking to make sure that it's not too high, it fits on the law right, you're not exceeding the, um, a permitted setbacks. And so, if you comply with all those objective, uh, criteria, that is an over-the-counter application through staff. It's really not a matter of discretion. And state law now says you really need to be able to complete that within a 60-day period. And lastly, uh, the city's ordinance, once it has been approved, a copy of it will be required to be mailed to, um, the State Housing and Community Development Department, State HCD, for their review. They have the right to comment on it, and hopefully, those are positive comments. And then, if, uh, they have comments on it that need to be addressed by the city, we have a period of time to do that. Um, that's, that's actually not in the ordinance, but that's state law. So, that's a next step, once you have, um, considered the ordinance. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have about this.
Any questions?
Uh, just with regard to converting existing structures, you know, I'm reading here that, it says, "Prior to the approval of an accessory dwelling unit, unit permit for the conversion of an existing structure for which there is no record of a bur, building permit being issued, satisfactory completion of a safety inspection is required." So, so if you've built something without a permit, you just need to have our inspector come in and determine that it's safe? Without necessarily having built to code?
Uh, it does have to be, yeah, I, it should be built to code. The law didn't change that. Then you're gonna have to correct. But the state also provided this five-year period of time. It's, it's not built into our ordinance because it doesn't need to be. Uh, but there is a five-year window from 2020 to 2025 where, um, it, it's kind of like an amnesty period to encourage people to legalize any existing ADUs that might have been built without a permit, where we wouldn't pound on you for code enforcement purposes, but you still, they still have to be safe.
Right, right.
And, uh, that's, that's not gonna change. Um, and the provision in our ordinance, uh, has long had that, uh, uh, place where it calls out, here are the things we're going to inspect and check for if you already built one without a permit. Because the idea is to legalize it, not to tell you you can't have it, if, if at all possible.
Okay, so, you, did you say there is a window, an amnesty window with the new law?
Correct. There's an amnesty window. They don't call it amnesty, but effectively acts like one. Because for a five-year period, these are not supposed to be approached from a code enforcement hammer. Uh, and that is, the purpose of that under state law is to encourage people to come forward and get their unpermitted work legalized. Because the state needs the housing, and we want to count the units as well. It's good for everybody.
Great.
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, Governor didn't give us much time to, uh, put this bill together.
That is true.
Effective January 1, and he signed it on October 9. You actually answered a lot of my questions. It was about the, I couldn't understand the difference between the junior ADU and the ADU. Um, but two quick questions. How, how, I, I guess I just need to think this through, but in the junior ADU, if the owner has to be living in it...
Or the primary unit, either one. Because remember, the junior ADU is attached to the primary dwelling unit.
Right, so, if they sell it, it would just be considered a house at a larger size or a different numbers of bedrooms or...
Or a house with a junior ADU attached to it as part of the footprint.
And then, the owner would have to...
They can't be separately sold.
Okay, so then it just couldn't be a rental unit?
No, it could be. It could be. I mean, um, so the...
Entire property could be a rental? So, like...
Oh, I see what you're asking.
Yeah, if they decided we're gonna rent the entire property, the owner wouldn't be living in it, they're renting it out to a family of five?
The way that the law is presently drafted and our ordinance follows that, you have to occupy the primary unit if you want to have a JADU attached to your property.
So, you sell it, though? You're saying the owner could sell it to somebody who intends to rent both the main and the ADU? Is it not an ADU anymore?
Or if the owner, right, or if the owner decides, I want to rent my entire property?
After he has established as an ADU? Is he not breaking the law by renting it?
I, um, you are, uh, highlighting one of the many areas of confusion within these three bills. There were three bills, three different authors, the governor signed them all, there are some internal inconsistencies. We try to do our best with interpreting, but I, I, I agree that that appears to be an inconsistency, particularly with the overall risk, uh, prohibition on, um, ownership or owner occupancy, which has been removed, except for the primary unit that includes a JADU.
Just to follow, just so I'm clear. Until we know otherwise, a person could build an accessory dwelling unit on their property, then leave the property and rent the main house out and the accessory dwelling unit.
They can do that now. We're not, it, it, so, a person who has a primary unit and builds an accessory dwelling unit, either because they convert their garage or, or some other building, or they just do a whole new construction, or even if they build an attached ADU, we're not talking about a JADU, then the ownership, the owner occupancy requirement is gone. They could literally rent both units. That is one of the big changes in the law.
Great, thank you. Open this up for public comment, questions? And we'll bring it back. And it is a urgency ordinance because we need to do this prior to December 31st.
Correct.
And we are just memorializing state law into local, into our local ordinances, so...
That is correct. We haven't changed the other attributes of our own ordinance. Um, we haven't modified our sizes of units. Um, but we have corrected things. So, for example, where we used to have a restriction of 15 feet in height...
Right.
We've now made that 16 feet.
Great. Any discussion, otherwise a motion?
I don't like this.
Yeah, there's not much to talk about.
I'll move to, uh...
No one cares? No one wants to comment? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to item number three, and that is the field use agreement, MOU extension.
Thank you, Mayor. Before council tonight is, uh, proposed amendment to the current field use agreement, uh, that we have in place with the Sierra Madre Girl Softball Association, the Sierra Madre Little League, Sierra Madre Pony League, and American Youth Soccer Organization, Region 2. Uh, this agreement, in one form or another, goes back to about 2004. Uh, the current agreement, however, was signed three years ago and expires on December 31st of this year. Uh, the agreement called for two three-year extensions, uh, but the users had to collective, collectively submit to extend, uh, the agreement by August 30th of this year. Uh, we missed that date, uh, and we would like, instead of an extension, to have council approve an amendment, uh, which would effectively allow for the extension if all parties agreed to it, to the, uh, first three-year term. Uh, in addition to that, the amendment, uh, includes a mediation and arbitration clause, uh, that all, uh, users would also have to agree to. Uh, so, we've been, we really enjoy, uh, the partnership the city has with our partners. We've been, uh, negotiating, uh, back and forth, it feels like since I have been here. And, uh, what the city has committed to is anything the partners agree upon, uh, the city will support. So, if they want to make changes to this agreement a day, a month, a year after council extends it, if they all unanimously agree to that change, uh, the city will come back and be happy to support that. Uh, we've also said, uh, because we understand, uh, some of the leagues have growing demand, which is a good thing, uh, that the city's happy to look at putting, uh, some serious funding into the middle school field, the little league field, potentially look at putting, uh, lights up at Dapper, uh, Renning Field, East of Elverno, basically anything that's on the table that makes sense, uh, we're happy to consider it, uh, in an effort to continue the agreement that we have in place right, right now.
Lights up at Dapper? That was, that's been a, you know, just do it before the residents that live around there know. Well, thank you. Any questions to the, uh, city manager? Yep?
So, I, I, it's not clear to me. Uh, none of the parties to this agreement have, uh, submitted for an extension. So, by us approving this, we still don't have their agreement, so what's...
That's correct, Mayor Pro Tem. Typically, this is not the order we would do it in, but because the current agreement expires without action on December 31st, uh, what we're saying is if council approves it, all the parties would still have to sign it and agree to it by December 31st. If any of the parties don't sign, uh, then their field use agreement will effectively dissolve, uh, beginning January 1st.
Only for the party that doesn't sign?
Uh, there's actually some legal, uh, non-clarity around that issue. Uh, so, we've been treating it as, uh, an agreement between all of the parties. However, uh, one of our partners, American Youth Soccer Organization, has been non-responsive. We're not sure, um, if they still exist or are still interested in the field use agreement. Uh, so, the last, uh, legal opinion we heard from the deputy city attorney is that it would be okay to continue, uh, without them because they have been non-responsive, even though they're a party to this agreement.
Okay, so, do you, do you expect that, uh, before this expires on December 31st, that the other parties, little league, uh, softball, and pony league are going to agree to this?
We're optimistic, uh, but it will be up to them to decide if they'd like to sign it or not.
So, say if little league doesn't sign it, that means that softball and, uh, pony league will still have the same use that they've had?
I think what we would look at in that case, uh, is starting a new field use agreement, uh, letting this one expire, and then with the two users who did sign it, starting a new field use agreement with them. Uh, and then opening it also up to any parties who may be interested. I, I don't think we'd try and divide a field use agreement that has currently has four partners and one, two. I think we'd go back and look at what makes the most sense for the partners that we have.
If I, if I might, the, the real purpose of the agreement is just to maintain the status quo for everyone, to give the parties time to negotiate new schedules if that's what they want to do. And that, that's all it is.
That's all it is, but I'm still trying to understand the consequences if not, uh, and if this doesn't work out the way we think it is, so...
Whoever...
I just want to get more clarification on the last part that you made. So, say, you've got four parties here, two, just for hypothetical, two agree to the extension, the three-year extension, and two are not responsive. So, you're, you're saying then that you will sit down with the two and notify the other two that didn't respond that we are going to negotiate with these two, and if you want to be part of it, join us, and if you don't, then whatever happens, happens?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, that's correct. We, uh, again, we wouldn't have two blank signature pages on the back of the agreement. We would assume that there would be a new field use agreement, and we know that we would have, uh, at least willing partners with the parties who have signed it.
Okay, so that, to me, the way I'm understanding this, this is a pretty strong incentive that if any of these parties want to have rights to the field use here, that they ought to play, 'cause if they don't, they may get absolutely nothing.
That's correct, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, just want to be clear on that. Yeah, thank you.
Well, no, I, the, thanks for clarifying, because we, we stay here that the failure to execute the amendment, as to any user fails to execute this amendment, will not be bound by its terms, and the agreement will expire as to the user on December 31st, 2019. So, I interpreted that, that we actually would have an agreement going forward for those that actually signed on. So, what we're saying is that is actually not the case, that we will have a completely new agreement.
Uh, I think, again, we would take the time to negotiate a new agreement because we would now have two partners where we had four under this scenario, so...
Okay, I just think then, then we should, number five to amendment number one, I think is, I think is contrary to what we're saying. So, I just want to make sure that, uh, that has changed.
Just as, as a practical matter, if, um, if, under your hypothetical, two of the parties agreed and two of them didn't sign, uh, all that would be happening, again, maintaining the status quo, and the two parties that signed, they signed to agree to their particular schedule. They're not automatically gonna inherit the, that, that's, so, that's why, as a practical matter, um, it would, the, the whole agreement might fall apart anyway, and the city might need to negotiate everything. But, it, it's clear that for those parties who do not sign, their rights are gone, if they don't want to sign the agreement, because they expire anyway by the 31st, and we're just trying to maintain the status quo.
I just want to make sure that there's an incentive to come to the table.
Right.
Yeah, and can we, we're gonna probably hear from the parties who are here, but can we just get a two-minute update as to where we are? Uh, I mean, I'm fine entering into this and, and moving along, but I assume we're gonna hear from the individual parties, and I'd love to know, kind of just from staff's perspective, where things are.
I think the parties have been, uh, working together on this for some time. Uh, I believe they understand at this point, not allowing the, the field use agreement to expire is in everyone's best interest. Uh, we've provided additional incentives to, to get them to continue to work together and unanimously agree to something in, uh, fixing other fields and providing additional space and, and talking about anything that kind of makes their lives better and helps them fulfill their mission easier. Uh, but to get to that, the, the three groups that are still part of the agreement need, need to come to an agreement together. So, the city's standpoint, and I, I don't want to speculate where the individual groups are at, is let's try and maintain, uh, what we have today before seeking out a new agreement, and let's hope that each of the groups, uh, can take into consideration the interests of their partners and other parties to this agreement, uh, as we move forward. But, I, I think where they're at, you would, you have to ask each group individually.
Got it. Okay.
Mayor, can I just, just another question? So, at what point would, if, if all three parties, uh, sign, or, yeah, three parties and ISO has been non-responsive, at what point does the dispute resolution piece come into play?
So, anytime, uh, under the, the new agreement, the, the parties feel, uh, that one party or multiple parties are not, uh, living up to their end of the agreement, it would trigger, they could call for the mediation.
Okay.
Uh, and it, there's not, uh, it's, it's, it's something that has to be requested or demanded, as opposed to something, or the city could observe it and, and call for it as well, but there's not kind of a specific item you'll see in the agreement that causes it to happen.
It's not free, so...
That's true.
It's a costly, uh, option that you have there. Let's open this up for public comment, questions, and then we'll bring it back. Anyone want to comment on this?
Evening all. Russ Meek, born and raised in town. Uh, have a son in little league and a daughter in softball, um, but I happen to be little league president currently. The immediate thought on this, uh, extension plan is that, uh, of course, we would all like to improve things, and we are working diligently to improve, uh, with the times and with, uh, little tweaks in the schedule. Uh, we're very close. We feel like, I think both parties feel like we're very close, and so, I just wanted to thank, um, certain members even of the softball board, Jeff Reisbeck, the other president who's here, Fred Thomas, who's so behind the scenes on so many great things in town, uh, three girls who've gone through hos, softball, Sharon Pevens, and are many great people. So, we've been online constantly on this, and we're diligently focused to get this done. And I think because we are so close, and we're currently at a status where both parties don't feel like they're winning anything, and neither party should, we should be working together to improve the partnership. Um, this extension is a good plan. We're definitely signing. Uh, it'd be suicide not to, and we're committed to improving it. So, uh, any questions, certainly here in the room, but I'll open it up to others.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Jeff Reisbeck. I'm president of, uh, Sierra Madre Girl Softball. We, um, we have a tough time. In 2019 alone... In 2019 alone, we had 306 girls sign up in the spring, and in the fall, we had 256 girls sign up. It's our biggest numbers we've ever had out of two particular seasons. We actually sent two teams to our national, to the national championships this year, our 10-year-olds and our, no, sorry, yeah, our 10-year-olds and our 14-year-olds. We run, I think, what I call to be a pretty successful program. I've had a daughter that just aged out of it, and another daughter that just came up old enough. So I'm in this for at least another eight years. Our board, I think, in terms of softball and baseball, would, would be pretty diverse in that half of our board has kids both, in both leagues, okay? So nobody wants to think that, you know, I, I have to make a decision for one kid and not the other, okay? However, we've been given three options at this point, okay? And the, the first option is to re-sign what we feel is an unfair agreement. It's lopsided, and it doesn't meet what we feel to be public accommodation laws. Number two, the other option we have is agree to lose more time, which we're being asked to, and sign a new agreement. Or number three, as we pointed out, have no fields at all, you know, be out of luck. We have no option at this point that would benefit our girls and, and being able to play in their city in an equal amount as the boys in the city get to do, okay? We, the last field, the, excuse me, the last field use agreement that came up, we asked for a little bit more time and, and ended up giving, actually taking some away. This recent field agreement negotiations, we asked for about 53%. I apologize, I'm gonna go...
No, you'll get more time. Go ahead. Go ahead.
53%, sorry, we were giving, giving away 47% of the field use time and, and taking 53, sorry, 47% for ourselves, and that wasn't suffice. We couldn't come to an agreement on that. And that includes time at Heasley, the T-ball field, middle school, both middle school fields and both elementary school fields. And, and it's, it's, we cannot build our schedule and have to send girls all over the San Gabriel Valley to play. A suggestion was made to, to, you know, with a list of fields that we could use, all the way as far as La Cañada. And, and it's not how, when they, if, if they wanted to go play in La Cañada, they'd sign up through La Cañada, okay? They don't mind using the, you know, local, if we go into Monrovia, if we go into Arcadia, even if we go into, you know, East Pasadena, we can, we can pull off that stuff. But we also have people that we compete, other teams and, and leagues that we compete with for field use time there, not to mention having to pay for it. And, and our, and our count, our, whenever we go there, the, we, we have to prove that we have X amount of girls that actually either live or attend those schools in that particular area. For example, Arcadia. When we go to Arcadia, they want to know exactly what our numbers are. You know, how many Arcadians we have, how many, how many go to Arcadia Unified Schools. So, so that takes a big, big chunk of how, how much field time we get in those particular areas. We, we, we don't know what to do at this point. Obviously, we have already started our registration, so we have to, I guess, begrudgingly sign the extension. It was approached to us by another league in, within USA Softball that they had this similar issue, and encouraged us to reach out, to, reach out to the ACLU, in which we've done. We are talking to them to figure out what, how they can help us to better get time. We, it's, I don't believe it to be a fair thing where we have a, we have a field up at Dapper that is just for baseball, and then we have a mixed-use field right down the hill that we don't even get full days on, that we end up having to, to, to give away time each, out of each of our days there. So that's just coming from our board and, and our frustration and how we're trying to make one plus one equal two.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other comments, or did you have a question for Jeff? Jeff, before you sit down?
You had 306 players last spring. How many of them were residents of Sierra Madre?
About 66% between residents of Sierra Madre or attended Sierra Madre.
How many were residents?
I probably, I don't know the exact number right offhand, but it was greater than 50%.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment question?
Relax. That's serious. Mayor, everybody, Russ? Okay, so...
Fred Thomas.
Fred Thomas, I'm sorry. I just assumed everyone knew. That was my fault. So we have, there is a, there is a dilemma. I, I want to start by saying this. As it turns out, November 8th, my family's 12th year anniversary living in Sierra Madre, and since I'm part K-9, that's like 84 years that I've been here now, so I might be the oldest member of, of the softball community. And I will say, this is the first time in years that I feel like Little League and, and girls softball are actually talking and trying to figure things out and trying to work on things. And so that, that is a positive. Where we're running into issue is more of an oversight governance, in my opinion, from the city's standpoint, and not necessarily from the two leagues, because the two leagues are going to, and they should, try to get, serve their, their kids the best. And so we get in arguments about, well, are they Sierra Madre residents? And where are they coming from? And they go to school here. And, and we get in all of those arguments, and all we're really saying is we've got great leagues that are very popular, that do very well, that kids want to participate in, and we want to accommodate them. Without the guidance of, of the standard of equal usage, it just, it just keeps the two groups fighting each other. That's all we do every time these, these contracts come up. It's always, and it is all, it's always about Heasley, so let's be clear on that. No one's championing to get to that middle school field, and no one's running a beeline to the elementary school field for games. This is about what is arguably one of the most beautiful facilities for youth sports in, in San Gabriel Valley. And that's a limited space, place. So the way that we've seen it in, in girls softball has been really a, we've always just kind of bowed to the fact that, you know, Little League is the kingpin, and it has been, and almost everybody that's served in the council played in Little League at some point. And, and so, you know, we, we, we get, we get that, we understand that. But we also understand that girls softball's been here since 1972 as well. So it, it's not a fly-by-night. What we need now is we need a, a real determination on what does it mean when the city says we have equal access? Is it proportionate access, or is it actually equal access? And, and the reason why we say that is, in the current agreement that we proposed that we didn't come to an agreement, we had a 53% Little League, 47% girls softball split, and it, it fell apart because there's some days that didn't work for one of the groups over the others, and the two groups couldn't, couldn't come to terms. But I should point out that, that in our agreements as they currently stand, the days that are earmarked quote-unquote "Little League days" are exclusive for Little League. They get the day in its entirety. And three of the days that are earmarked quote-unquote "girls softball", we've, in previous agreements, have given Little League a chunk of that time. So when we ask for that time back, we're just saying, we're asking for parity. We're saying, if you've got exclusive days that are all you, then we should have exclusive days that are all us. And I will, I will end on a few, on this one, because I, I know that the time just went up. At some point, the city's going to have to define to the leagues what equal access means, legally, from a, from a planning standpoint. I don't think it's fair for any group to talk about their numbers. I don't think it's fair for any group to talk about where those children come from, because if you ask the store owners in Sierra Madre, I'm sure they're not turning away customers because they came from Covina. I'm sure they're going to take that, that paycheck and set them down and feed them. So I, I think those are bad arguments. I think the appropriate argument is, what is equal access? And then it's up to each league to make the accommodations work based on the limited field use that we have, and not keep coming back every three years. And, and it really is kind of an unfair thing where we're, we're now saying, well, we are going to sign on to yet another agreement that is not equal, because if we don't, we're going to lose the ability to play softball in Sierra Madre at all. And so I would really urge the council, not like you don't have anything else going on with your lives, but I would really urge the council to get into equal access as it pertains to girls and boys' youth sports, and what that means in Sierra Madre, and define that clearly so that the two groups can stop fighting this issue and actually figure out some things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Scott Clausen, former president. My son is fifth year, or fifth generation Sierra Madre. So I've been around for quite a while, and so has my family. I just want to thank you for this extension. We certainly are trying our best to figure this out, and we realize that it is an extension and not the ends of the civilization of Sierra Madre. And so I don't know if you guys have any questions that you have for Little League that you might have at this time that we can help answer after what's already been said?
Any questions for Scott or Russ?
I don't have any questions, because at this point, I mean, my understanding is that you folks are working it out.
Yeah, everything that's been said is going to be working out.
Yeah, you haven't asked the council to make the rules.
Right.
And I'd prefer that we don't. Actually, I mean, the best scenario for us is that you guys work it out.
Right, and so we appreciate the extension.
Great. I don't think we, it doesn't sound like there's any questions from us right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Looks like we have one more.
I'm a little confused in that statement that you put out right now that is going to be between the two leagues.
Sorry, can you just state your...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. My name's Lou Martin. I'm all resident of Sierra Madre for the last 10 years. But the statement that I just heard Fred mentioned was that he wants the council to step forward and lay the ground rules here, not for the two leagues to continue to fight. Is that not correct? Is that not what I heard?
Well, if I can clarify my point is, no, I don't want you to fight. I want you to negotiate something that works out. That's my, my personal opinion on this, but again, as a council, we haven't been asked or have we agreed to.
I think that is what he just asked.
Okay, we're gonna, we're not going to do the back and forth. You can finish your comment.
Okay, well, that, that was my comment, is that I heard him ask for the council to do that. So, and you say you weren't asked, and I'm saying you were asked. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? No, no, that's good. Okay, we're going to bring it back. So does staff want to make a comment? Do you want to just, we, we can kind of weigh in here, but...
Yeah, I think what we have said is if, from the city perspective with regards to the oversight and guidance, is that if the city is forced to be the arbiter, we likely do not understand the ins and outs, the needs of each of the leagues. These are the leagues that live it every day. They see each other. Our preference, our strong preferences for them to work together. They all voluntarily entered into this agreement. They have to decide what's in their best interest. In the end, if the city has to be an arbiter with an expired agreement, the city will be. We, we don't know what the partnership looks like or what that will look like. I just have a strong belief that government is not going to operate this agreement as well as the leagues who currently operate the agreement.
Okay. Open this up for discussion. Anyone care to weigh in here?
Just another question for the city manager. So a scenario where this, all the negotiations fall apart, the agreement continues on if we go for it tonight, the agreement continues on until they come back and fix it up, right? So there's no time limit other than three years, correct?
Correct. What we're attempting...
Three years ought to be enough time to figure out what the differences are and get some kind of compromise. It seems, I'm, I'm trying to figure out why we're being asked to intervene when, when we, when that could be accomplished, unless I'm missing something here.
That's our stance as well, Councilmember Clausen. Councilmember Erismane?
I'll just comment that, you, you know, it sounds, it sounds like you've been working at this for quite a while. I don't know if there's going to be a, a compromise anytime soon. I'd hate to think it would have to go to dispute resolution and going through that process. I, I strongly agree with Mayor Protem, and, and you don't want government to dictate this. I, I, I don't think that's the role that you want us to play. I, I think for, for many of the things that we talk about, we want to see how it's driven by the citizens, driven by residents, driven by those that use it, as opposed to getting someone like me, love watching softball, love watching baseball. I've never played it. I have no idea how the things operate. I, I, I can, but again, I don't know if I'm the best person for that. If it comes to a point that, and, and if that needs to be written into an MOU, you know, where it comes to council and we make the decision or it comes to city management, I'd like to see how we can give this another try, seeing how we can come to some type of agreement. It sounded like there was some of the 53, 47%, the days, full days, if we can come to some compromise there. But I, I don't think you want it here, the decision made here, but if it needs to get to that point, you know, I, I can definitely throw my hat in.
So Councilmember Erismane, on that point, one thing I, I should have made clear earlier, and though the mayor pointed out, it's an expensive option. Under the extension, if it was approved by the parties and they didn't like the current field use agreement, they would essentially get to go in front of a judge and make their case for why they feel that the use is unfair, and that judge would arbitrate the dispute and taking into account the concerns that both parties have raised tonight. So it is an expensive option, but if the parties are unable to come to an agreement, they do have that option of, of simply making their case to a, a independent third party.
That's non-binding, though. That's non-binding, and at the end of the day, legislatively, that can't, that option can't be...
This is intended to be binding arbitration as drafted by the...
He said non-binding.
One of the things we've been unsuccessful at doing is getting all parties to the table to make an, to come to an agreement. So there's been many attempts, and as you've seen over the course of the past 18 to 24 months, those attempts have gotten us to the point where the agreement's going to expire at the end of this month. City, or our partners will have to cancel their seasons, right? So we've drafted an agreement that gives them the opportunity to go in front of a judge, and that way, they're not saying the city's being unfair, or Little League's being unfair, softball's being unfair. The, the judge will mediate the dispute. It's expensive, but it forces them to come to an agreement.
Right. No, if the three parties that are active in it sign on, then they are bound by this amendment and this extension, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If they don't sign on, then we have an agreement that, I don't know if it just ceases to exist as to, you know, as of December 31st, or we are taking the position that the agreement is essentially like a month-to-month, you know, rental agreement. Does it just cease to exist as...
It ceases. It ceases, and then the parties would be starting over from scratch to negotiate a whole new agreement, and then try to negotiate with the city what their various schedules could be. And really, the city should not be put in the position of being used as a hammer by one group against the other regarding what's a fair distribution of field time.
May I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead.
Is it not true that if, if the agreement ends, it's really about who has access to the field? The public has access to the field.
Correct.
So any travel... So, any travel team in softball, base, baseball, soccer, any travel team, or any group of travel teams, or any league, travel league could make a petition for these fields. And if they're willing to pay the fee, and they get in first and do all their due diligence, they get the use of the fields. So, it, it seems to me that it's a very unwise thing to let this agreement lapse, because it, it would let everything, we, we would lose everything.
That's correct, Councilmember Claus.
At least the status quo gives us our leagues until we get something figured out.
The reservations would be similar to how we reserve Hart Park House, or any city pavilion. And we have a certain amount of time that we'll go out forward-looking and reserve, and certain amount of consecutive rentals and, and rules like that. It would, it'd be pretty difficult to run a league like that, but everyone would have equal opportunity to reserve the field x, x number of days in advance.
Because I remember the prior management team, before you came on board, we went through a field use agreement, and there were two travel teams that were trying to carve out space in the schedule away from softball, and away from Pony, and away from Little League. They didn't, they didn't get in there, because we, I think we rolled the agreement over and kept them from doing that, right?
Yeah, Councilmember Claus, the reason that the travel team was unsuccessful was because the field use agreement was in place. They did indicate that should we open up the field use agreement, that they would be interested in getting time, and we would treat them like a community partner under a new field use agreement.
Even though they aren't even, they wouldn't even have players from our community.
Well, council, of course, would have, would have the option of, of putting different parameters, such as a percentage of players have to be residents, you're unable to turn players away from a team. Kind of, if the field use agreement expires, it's one of the reasons that I don't think the city should be putting forward the ideas, is my, my ideas are probably counter to the successful operation of a league, but probably better for the residents who have been unable to participate at this point. What we're trying to do is keep the status quo, and let the leagues figure it out and partner together.
Yeah. And so, let me just, I'll just finish my comments. I think at this point, I mean, what I'm hearing, and this isn't new, I mean, we've heard this since I've been on council, this is at least the second time, and I know it's, it's happened before. I think that there, there does need to be, in my mind, some sort of mediation from the city. Like, I don't know if this needs to be a formal mediation, but I do think that the parties, right now, I do think that both parties should sign on to this. That's my opinion. And I do think, though, you know, with them signing on, I do think that we as a city should step in to at least, and I'm happy to do it, in, in my capacity, I'm happy to have a subcommittee do it. I think that what we need here is some sort of third-party arbiter who isn't going to charge them a lot of money, because I do think that, look, if you go into mediation or arbitration, you're paying thousands of dollars of costs and time, where I think that we, or a member of city council could be doing this. And I'd offer my own time. I think that what they need is a third party in that room with them talking this through. I think you have one party that thinks, you know, I'll quote, thinks that this is unfair and lopsided, who thinks that this is a failure for, you know, of the city of providing public accommodation, and has gone to the ACLU. I think you have another party that likes the status of the agreement. I don't know who's right, who's wrong. At this point, I don't think there is a right or a wrong, but I do think that they are at an impasse, if you will, to where they need someone. I get this whole, it's easier and it's better for them just to work it out. It doesn't seem as though they've worked it out. It seems as though one party still does not like it. So, I think that, to the extent that they do sign back on to this, I think that we should set up some sort of formal, you know, process where they can come before, again, I'm willing to do it, if it's a subcommittee, maybe a subcommittee's willing to do it, to just actually facilitate this getting done, once and for all. Because I just think that if you continue to allow this to happen, I, I, look, the city could make this decision. I guarantee you that both parties will be very upset with it. I'll just say that. If you allow us to make this decision, it will be suboptimal to you guys figuring this out, maybe with the help of us, or one of us. But by not signing on, by letting this lapse, by just bringing it back to us, this is going to be worse for both leagues, guaranteed. I think what is optimal is signing back on, but in order for, for you to do that, I think we need to step in a bit here, and make sure that we're hearing everything. And maybe staff has already tried to do this, and maybe you need a council member to do it, and I'm willing to do it. So-
Mayor, I agree with both of those points. And the first one, under the amendment, the first step is informal mediation under the alternative dispute resolution, so that is an option. Our, our assumption is this gets extended, and then pretty quickly, there's, there's a claim for alternative dispute resolution. And we're, again, we're trying to find a way that, the city has been arbitrating this since 2004, and honestly, and since I've been here, we've been negotiating it since I've been here sporadically and regularly as well. So, we're, we're trying to move this to, let's let the parties, if they can't come to an agreement, keep the status quo, sign an extension, the alternative dispute resolution, start with informal mediation, and if they don't agree to that, then we go to formal arbitration. And again, we're trying to provide a mechanism where they can say, we've made our best argument, and we have an impartial third party make that determination of who's correct.
Yeah. I think the problem with the impartial third party is you have to pay that person. And I, I just, I just don't, I don't think that that is a smart thing to do. So, what I'm saying is before we get there, and I think it's probably an option under this, if they sign on, then again, I think that this wouldn't be putting us out too much. We as a city wouldn't be making the, the decision, but a council member, two of us, whatever, could sit down, could take six hours out of a day, you know, on a weekend or whatever, and just hammer this out. And I'll just say, if it doesn't get done in that room, in those six hours, well then, then you gotta go down that path, right? You gotta go down the path of formal arbitration, formal mediation, and, you know, again, I think that's suboptimal. But I'm just gonna throw that out there. You know, I, I, I'm not seeing a ton of appetite for, for us collectively to make this decision, which I think is totally right. I don't think we should. But I do think that we, we have a role maybe in stepping in, and providing some sort of help in informally mediating this, you know?
I think mayor council's able to amend this proposed amendment anyway. They see fit, and if council would like some type of informal mediation between the parties with the council subcommittee, that's certainly within your purview to, to amend it that way tonight.
Is anyone else willing to do this, or does anyone else?
Well, I mean, I'd be in favor of the concept. I, I, what I was trying to say is that you don't want us, the four of us, collectively in that decision.
Yeah, I think everyone's agreed, yeah, totally.
In, in, in your scenario, for us to step in to conduct our own type of mediation, and be a third party. I, I mean, I'd be in favor for that. I, I still think there should be another attempt from two or three parties to, to try and come up with a compromise, but you're right, I, I don't know if there is gonna be compromise made at this point. I, I'm in favor of it. I, I mean, I, I can volunteer time for it. I don't know if I'm the best person, but I, I can volunteer time for that.
I have a lot of experience with this, by the way.
There you go, Mayor Protem.
No, I'm not sure I would. I'll just put this out there, because I was experienced with it when I was a member of the old Park and Recreation Commission, when it was brought to me as a commissioner, and I was experienced with it as a Little League board member, and as a Pony League board member. So, I've been through the wars. I've been in the position of both of you in negotiating this, so I know how tough it is. I know what the issues are. But that, in a way, I'm not sure is an advantage of sitting down, and I may not be as totally objective.
I don't know, you sound like the perfect-
I was like, nice out, Mayor.
Mr. Claus?
Well, I, you know, I would be willing to do it, but I think, I have to say, I, I have two concerns. I, I do believe that, I mean, when I, I took my oath of office, I, I was running to be a leader for the people of Sierra Madre. And so, I feel, my bias is I, I have to account to them politically. They're the ones that I have to answer to. Those are the people that I went out to knock on doors and put up the signs for. And so, I feel obligated to them. So, it's not a matter of picking your favorite here, it's a matter of duty for me. So, I, in that sense, I know that the girls softball league is people with far more people from out of town than Little League is, and that's a problem. For me, that's a concern. Now, I think we can do better. I think we may be able to find a little bit happier medium. But I think if girls softball is really concerned with some kind of a better deal, I, I have to go back and tell the residents of the city, you know, these are the, these are the things that I'm trying to do for people outside of our city. So, I don't think I want to do it, because I feel like I, I couldn't do it the way I think one of the two parties would like me to do it.
Okay. I mean, look-
I'm not trying to weasel out of something. I'm trying to be very honest.
No, we don't, we don't even have to decide it today. I mean, I do think that the agreement, this extension, does include a informal mediation component, as our city manager said. I think, you know, look, I think I'm fine approving this as-is, with, you know, the only caveat being that this informal mediation process, I do think that we have appetite for a subcommittee of the council to serve in that capacity. We have three of us that, you know, we can, we can assign two of us at some point. I don't think we need to do it now. I would implore the parties to try to figure this out. If you don't figure, you gotta sign on to this. I mean, that's, if you don't sign on, it lapses. Things get, I just think, you know, things don't work out well that way. Sign on to it. There's an informal mediation. If you don't solve things in the next, I don't know, month, I don't know when the, when the right time is, but if you can't do it on your own, well then, we are going to step in as a subcommittee, and then we're gonna figure it out. In that room, for six hours, or 12 hours, however long it takes, and then that's, that's how it's gonna work. And I don't think that that is necessarily going to work out better for one side or the other, but I just think that it's better than having it hang over everyone's head forever. Does that sound like a plan? I mean, is that okay with both? Go ahead. If you, if you can come up, yeah, I'll, go ahead.
No, good. We're talking, the heart of it is, how many kids are from Sierra Madre? How many kids are from outside? That's a relatively reasonable argument, except for one thing. Both leagues are operating with, with regard to accepting their, their players based on what their national organizations have dictated. Little League's mandated that they can only have people sign up that are residents of the area, the map that's drawn for them, or attend school in that same area. But that means that a kid that lives in Long Beach who attends St. Rita's could play for Little League. But a girl that lives in Covina, I know it wouldn't happen, but that's what it means. It means that if they live in Long Beach and they went to St. Rita's, they could, they could play here. I'm all for, if, if we're gonna do a residency restriction, I think both sides lose, because I would want it to be a true residency restriction. I would want it to be just like the schools that say, if you, if you don't have utility bills in this, in this town, then you're not in the count. But that, I don't think that's what anybody's saying. What I'm saying is, someone has to help us figure out what equal access means, and equal access can't be proportionate to how many people are coming from what area. Or, or it's gonna have to always be that. Like, like, that's, that's the whole issue. We can't keep dancing around that, that issue, because that's the fireball. The fireball issue is, most of the Little League kids are Sierra Madre residents, and most of the girls softball residents, depending on the season, it varies.
Okay.
So, we, we, that's why we need-
Point taken, point taken, yeah. And then-
Takes place in the, in the meeting, not now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this will be, this will be a, something that we can discuss during, I think, you know, no, no, no.
Representative Claus is on record saying that he's, he's, he's for the, the residents of Sierra Madre, but does that mean that you're going to then cut out the 30% of the Little League that doesn't reside here?
Okay, we're gonna, thank you. Councilmember Claus, yeah?
Yes, I'm obligated to the people who voted for me. That's a, that's a legal fact. So, I can't dispute that, neither can you. What I was saying is, I don't really feel, given that, given what you're looking for, that I should be on that committee to try to help you through this. I think you're better off negotiating good faith with the other side, and a good negotiation means both sides walk away unhappy.
Right.
You're not gonna get everything you want, and neither will they, and you got three years to do it. I mean, that's, other, other than that, the four of us, or the two of us, are gonna come up with something that's gonna be much less satisfactory for both of you, and we, it's in the interest of our city council, our city, to have both leagues in good standing in our city. I mean, I have tons of friends who have girls, and have girls and girls softball. So, I mean, I'm perfectly happy with girls softball. I, I admire them. Totally. I mean, this is just, for me, a matter of, hey, who am I accountable to? You can define the issue any way you like in negotiations.
Okay. So, we, I think we're on the same page here, and so can we, with that, you know, that discussion, that caveat, I'll take a motion on-
Mayor, if I could, just, just point of clarification, from what I hear you saying is, an informal mediation process, you like that. Do we then need to strike binding arbitration? That is very expensive, then that would also be an expense for the city as a party to this agreement.
Well, so, the way I read this, as it's currently written, is any dispute or, or claim, et cetera, not resolved, it can be, you know, it can be resolved by informal negotiation between the parties, and so mediation-
We can keep all that.
Yeah, we can keep all that.
Do you want to strike the requirement for binding arbitration? That's what I'm asking.
Well, I don't know if we necessarily, I, tell me why we would be on the hook for some cost there.
You're a party. You're a party to the agreement.
Right.
It's a dispute with the city.
And-
You have two groups here that want the city to be the hammer, to interpret the field access agreement in a way that benefits one or the other of them, and they want the city to do it instead of negotiating it. And so, that will result in dispute if the parties aren't able to negotiate this, which the entire council has implored them to engage in that process. So, by putting a binding arbitration clause in this, yes, that will absolutely impact the city as well. It is one of the parties to the agreement. So, do you want to do that?
Yeah, the cost would be split up equally between all the parties.
And, and, and an arbitrator will be deciding how fields in Sierra Madre shall be used.
Right.
Do you want to do that?
Let me just ask the city manager why, I mean, when we put this in here, and the thought of doing the binding, you know, I'm gonna let you get a word in before we make a decision on whether it's binding, because you have, you have this in here, because I think you think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we do think it's a good idea, Mayor. I think what, what you've seen tonight is essentially a replay of every meeting that we've had. And if the users are unable to come to an agreement by themselves, I believe they're also unlikely to come to an agreement in some type of informal mediation. But these are the groups that serve the children and youth of Sierra Madre, so we are seeking a resolution from an independent third party. The way the city looks at it is, we can spend this money on arbitration, or we can spend it on fixing fields. Either way, we're spending the money.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and point taken from the city attorney. I, I think, I think I'm fine leaving it in there, considering that I, I think-
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, and thank you for that. I do think that, to that point, there needs to be some understanding that if we don't get this done, and this goes to formal mediation arbitration, the city's spending some money, but it's materially different than the amount of money. It's the same amount, but I think it'll affect the leagues way more than it affects the city. So, I think keeping that in there is actually a good thing. So, with that, I'll take a motion.
And just to clarify, the informal piece, we are saying that we will use us as the informal-
Yes. I, I mean, look, and I think once we get word that there needs to be an informal mediation, and, look, I, we don't, I don't think we need to set a timeline now. I think the parties will come to us when, once that needs to be done.
Yep.
Then I think then, we as a council will have two of us do that. I'm happy to do it. Councilmember Azmendi and Mayor Protem are happy to do it, so I think we'll have, you know, we'll have plenty of, of ability to do that. So, with that, you have the motion, or?
I will move to approve the MOU as is.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is unanimous. Thank you all for coming, and hopefully you can work it out. Going on to item number five, because item number four was taken off. Yeah, let's take a five-minute bathroom break. Thank you. Sorry, officer. Yeah, let's take a five-minute bathroom break. Thank you. Sorry, officer.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, and, uh, city staff. Kyle Bailey, acting lieutenant with, uh, Sierra Madre PD. Uh, as you know, our, uh, contract with, uh, humane services is, uh, gonna be ending, uh, this coming June, twenty twenty. During our review of the, uh, contract, staff learned that our current Sierra Madre municipal code, uh, six point zero four zero point one zero, adopted by, uh, reference LA County Code four seven two nine as its animal control ordinance. Uh, we learned that in, uh, two thousand sixteen, the county ratified and changed that ordinance, uh, four seven two nine, and, uh, relabeled it Title Ten. There was no changes, there's no significant changes in the actual code itself. In review, uh, staff is recommending that the amendment of the municipal code, uh, of our municipal code, so that it contain and reference the updated, uh, county title code ten. This would also apply to two other, uh, municipal codes that the city has in place. Six point zero four zero point zero five zero and point zero six zero, uh, which remain the same by definition. Uh, however, will also need to be amended to, uh, the correct county code associated with Title Ten. Lastly, uh, staff is also recommending amendment, or amending our current code, uh, ending in point three zero within the same section, which references by name our contracted service provider. To read more, uh, generically, the contracted service provider shall be the pound master in lieu of our, uh, current contracted, uh, service provider. Uh, these items are all references, uh, ordinance fourteen twenty-one in the agenda, and, uh, staff is recommending, uh, city council approval for these ordinances.
Thank you.
Take any questions if...
Great. Thank you, Lieutenant Bailey. Uh, Mayor Protem, question?
Why was this not a consent calendar item? I just don't even understand why we're even considering, you know?
Uh, I believe the answer is because it's an ordinance change, Mayor Protem, so it has to be a discussion item.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's gonna be any hard-hitting questions on this one. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, public comment, questions? And we'll bring it back. Uh, a motion?
Move to Protem.
Go ahead, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. We'll move on to item number six, and this is the resolution declaring the election results. Our assistant city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you, for your consideration, is Resolution Number sixty-six. It's a resolution of the city council residing the facts of the special municipal election held on November fifth, nineteen, uh, two thousand nineteen, and declaring the results of such matters as provided by law. Uh, if you will recall, the ballot initiative that came before the city council was approved by the city council, went to the voters at the November fifth election. At that election, Measure S was decided by the voters and approved. Two thousand four hundred and fif- and forty-seven votes were cast at that special election. Of those, four hundred and four votes were cast at precinct number zero two A. And of those, the affirmative votes were three hundred and forty-eight, and the, uh, negative votes were fifty-four. At precinct eleven A, there were three hundred and four votes cast. Of those, the affirmative votes were two hundred and fifty-one, and the negative votes were fifty-one. Cast, uh, votes cast by mail were one thousand seven hundred thirty-nine, and of those seventeen thirty-nine votes, it was one thousand three hundred seventy-six in the affirmative, and three hundred and sixty-one were vote, were no votes. The Measure S was passed at eighty point zero, eighty point nine one percent, which is an overwhelming, overwhelming passage. Uh, as a result of the affirmative voter initiative, uh, the council is required to adopt a resolution residing the facts of the election upon completion of the canvas. And the new schedule is, the new sales tax is scheduled to become operative on April first of twenty twenty. That concludes my report. Staff is available if should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll open this up for public comment, questions? Yes, and we'll bring it back. Un- unbelievable result. Again, congrats to all the volunteers, some of whom are here today. Uh, the Alcorns, Gary Hood, uh, for making it happen, and our, uh, city clerk, who was, uh, so instrumental as well, and our mayor Protem. How about a motion?
I'll move to, uh, what are we doing, certifying? All resolutions, I'll move to...
Just the one, yeah.
Just the one.
Okay, I'll move to, uh, approve that resolution. What is it, nineteen sixty-six?
That's right.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. And we'll move on to item number seven, the options for filling the city council vacancy.
I do not know how we have eighty-two hundred registered voters.
It's a lot, yeah.
There's dead people on the wall.
Assistant city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The, before you is a staff report, a staff report prepared by city staff, presenting options to the city council for filling the vacancy left behind when council member Denise Del Mar vacated her seat in late October. Uh, at the November city council, November third, excuse me, at the November twelfth city council meeting, the city council had staff bring in, in ordinance to repeal the current procedures for filling that vacancy, and has now reverted instead to government code, section three six five one two. Uh, the city council also directed staff to return to that meeting with a resolution calling for a special election at the regular election on November third, twenty twenty. Uh, before you, uh, are options for filling the vacancies, the city council may consider leaving the seat vacant until the November third, twenty twenty election. The city council may consider the appointment of a qualified individual to serve on the city council until November third, twenty twenty. Qualified would be eighteen years or older, a resident of Sierra Madre, and registered to vote within Sierra Madre. And, or the council may provide any other direction or return, or ask staff to return to a future meeting with additional information. That concludes my report. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. We will open this up for public comment, questions? And seeing none, discussion?
No, I'll, I'll start.
Sure.
I'm not seeing a compelling reason to appoint somebody. The only good reason I can, 'cause since we've already called for the special election, so we'd be filling this position for basically a year. Uh, the only reason I would think to do it is to, we'd break a, a two-to-two deadlock vote. And I'm really not sure we want to have an unelected person to be that, put in that position to break a, a tie like that. So, um, the other part of it is too, is I happened to run into Joe Mosca, former, uh, mayor of Sierra Madre at a conference. And he was appointed to the, uh, council in Encinitas. So, I asked him, how did that work? And he said, well, they accepted applications, and then because of, uh, the Brown Act open meeting laws, they interviewed the candidates in...
Oh, my goodness.
And I just didn't want to go through that spectacle. So, I think, uh, I'm just really good with just having the, the, having it open for a year, uh, with the status quo, and, uh, I think we'll be just fine. We have an election coming up in a year, so we're good then.
So, I, I mean, I appreciate your arguments, and, and I think they're brought a lot more thought out than, than mine, so thank you for that, Mayor Protem. I, I, I think I'd had, I had this preference, um, I've had this preference, um, since, uh, we knew of the vacancy. I think, given the timeframe and the time it would take to get, uh, an appointed person up to speed, um, I'm glad we, we went, moved forward with emergency ordinance, or, because I didn't think that was an option for us either. So, I would be in favor of keeping the seat vacated, but really to give the opportunity for three people to, to run for the, um, open seats that will be coming up in November twenty twenty. And I think, uh, one of my reservations was appointing someone that would want to consider running, because it gives them an advantage. Um, but I know the mayor had shared that in some cities, they've, um, they've structured it differently, that the person that's appointed may not run. Um, in other cities, they've done, um, they've elected not to do that. But, um, I think, given the timeframe, uh, I'm in favor of keeping the, uh, position vacated until November.
I'm, 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 uh, open to arguments from both sides. I'm not committed to either way. I'm, I'm good with you, your arguments. I think they're solid. I don't really think, I don't think we have a compelling reason to have another person. I think it'd be nice to have another person, another set of eyes on issues, a break, a tie-breaking vote, somebody who could do some of the council work, uh, subcommittees and such, but I think we've proven ourselves capable of doing those things, so if you, that's the will, I'm with you guys.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm with, I think, everyone on this. I, I just think that you're looking at a two-to-three-month process probably of applications, interviews. By the time they would get on to council, it'd be, we're probably looking at March, and then they'd have, you know, six, seven months before it's, you know, basically they're gone, right? Unless we said that they could be running for reelection, and I have real problems with that. If we appoint someone, I think that is an unfair advantage. So, essentially, you'd just be putting someone in there to get up to speed, and then by the time they get up to speed, they'd be done. So, I don't really see a compelling reason to do it. I do think that other cities have taken different tactics, you know, Glendale, West Covina. And I just think that, right now, the four of us are doing a really good job, and I don't, I don't see, other than the tie-breaking vote, a real pressing reason to do it. And I do, I think the responsibility of appointing someone to a council seat is, is, that's a great responsibility, and I just don't know, um, if I necessarily want to tread into those waters. So, I'm fine leaving it where it is. Um, and I don't know if we need a motion for that. I, I mean, it sounds like we have a consensus, so... So, I think we'll leave it there. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. We'll move on to the last item, which is the, uh, city manager employment contract. And Mr. England, are you gonna stay for the conversation, or are you gonna leave?
Set the pleasure of the council.
You can stay. Uh, Madam City Attorney?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, so, I believe we're going into, uh, City Manager England's third year with the city. And, uh, each, um, uh, as a result of, uh, his performance evaluation, there is before you a contract amendment. But that is in the context of a, going into a third year, and, uh, the years of service have really been exemplary. The, in this staff report, there's just a few highlights of, uh, where the city has gone under the leadership of, uh, Mr. England in operations. For each of the... For each of the three years, the budget has come in on budget and has in, also saved the city money. The, I think, with the zero-based budgeting, the first year resulted in a 12 percent cut in budget, the next year was also a budget cut and a savings, and the, of reducing the expenditures by 1.1 million, and the current budget projects a city general fund balance of 1.84 million. Additionally, under city manager England's guidance, the council agreed and approved a sale of some cell tower leases, which yielded, I believe, about 1.2 million dollars, which Mr. England recommended, and the council agreed to pay down some of the city's accrued PERS liability, and that puts the city in, in the unprecedented position of being 90 percent funded, something really few cities, particularly city of this small size can, can claim. Under city manager England's leadership, the city has also developed a professional fire department for the first time, and that's a big step forward, and I'm, there's so many things, I'm sure that I am missing a few really important ones, yeah, there's, so, and, and of course, yes, I'll let the council comment on some of the many great things that city manager England has accomplished in not even three years' time. And as a result, for his latest performance evaluation, the subcommittee is recommending to the council a 5 percent raise, which would take his compensation from 200,000 annually to 210,000 annually. We would also clarify in the term of his agreement that there really is no term, it's a, it's an evergreen contract, that means either party at any time can decide that, that, to terminate the agreement, and that's, that's pretty consistent with a lot of city manager contracts. And finally, Mr. England's existing management leave, he did not have specified or spelled out the ability to cash it out annually, and with everything that he's been doing for the city, it's been difficult for him to actually get, take advantage of that management leave. So if it's not used or cashed out, it would be lost. So we are also clarifying and recommending that that amendment be put in the employment agreement as well. So it's really just the three issues, the 5 percent raise, the ability to cash out, the existing benefit of the 80 hours per year, and just clarifying that the employment contract doesn't really have a set term. And if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions, or I assume we want to make some comments each of us during discussion? If there's no questions, I'll just open it up for public comment or questions before our discussion.
I've, I have an opportunity of meeting a lot of residents, people in the, in the city, and for the first time ever since we've, we've been here for like 53 years, I hear such positive comments about our city manager. I think certainly deserves a huge raise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we didn't give him a huge raise.
Anyone else? Okay, saw a thumbs up. So we'll bring it back, and I'll just, I'll open it up for whoever wants to say something first.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll...
I'll go first.
Yeah.
I don't have a whole lot to say. I think we've, we've, we've said it a lot in open session, the last six months to a year, but the city is well governed. We're well governed, and I'd like to take credit for it. I'm sure my colleagues up here would, but the, the decision to hire you is why we're well governed, and you are, you've just, you've done a tremendous job, and I think you're, you've earned this raise, and I just want you to know that what Pat is saying about the public is everything I hear too. And I have to say, people, I've heard, I've know people who've been just anti-government, period. They actually say positive things about our government now. So congratulations on that, I'm very happy to vote for this.
Councilor Mendi?
Okay, I'll go.
Okay.
I have a lot to say, but I'm not going to, because I just don't want to take up too much time, but I just want to, I just want to emphasize that some of these accomplishments were what was laid out in the interview process. And I do want to also just give my counterpart here, Gene Goss, a heads up, because it was him that emphasized that we really want the city manager to be the face of the city and to interact with its residents. And I hadn't even thought of that when you brought it up, but that was a very profound ask to me, and I realize now just how wise council member Goss was when he insisted upon that, because I think that is also very key to running the city in a great way, and Gabe has just been really outstanding that way. But just some other things, is some of the things I know I was really adamant about was infrastructure. And look at the condition of our infrastructure, how we're improving, we've funded it, and made a tremendous progress in fixing some of the problems we have with the water. So financially, I mean, these were some really brilliant things that he brought to the table here with the pre-funding, the funding of the pensions, the prepayment, or catching up on our unfunded obligation, just as you pointed out, the selling of the, the rights to the towers, and just the zero-based budgeting that he has brought. So not only are we in an unprecedented position, having 90 percent of our, caught up on our, our pension funding, but remember too, that our reserves are more than our statutory obligation that we have. So it's not like we plundered the reserves to do this either, so, I mean, it's just absolutely brilliant. So I, I couldn't be happier with the way things are going, and I feel that we're very fortunate to have somebody of his capability here, and I just wanted to go on record and say that for austerity.
I think there's obviously reassurance as to why we feel so comfortable staying as a, a council of four, because of the leadership that you bring to the table, and, you know, it's, it's, this two-pager doesn't do you justice, but I, I appreciate the fact that it at least highlights the pieces that we are bragging about to others, that we are the envy of, of so many other cities, so thank you for your leadership there. Financially, I, I mean, you could just list all of these, and I don't even think it really captures every piece that you've been able to identify in terms of our finances, how to move forward with that, and, and the liability, the pension piece is just, is just huge. And so I appreciate your leadership in that area, and, and being able to really foresee two, three, five, 10 years down the road. I think what we don't see on these two pages, or even, I don't think it's been mentioned yet, but I want to underscore how important it has been, I think, just for the morale of our staff, what I've seen here, and really being able to empower staff to take ownership of their departments, of their work, of their positions, and be able to be creative in that work. And, and I think we've been able to see a lot of that, and, and, you know, you always, you're so good about saying, I can't take the credit for all of it, which you can take a lot of credit for, but I think because of your leadership style, we've been able to see those type of innovative approaches come from staff, and, and really, the, the sense and the feel that I, I, I get here when I walk through city hall is, has really been amazing. So thank you for that, the external, your external relationships with not just the city and our residents, which I think my colleagues have highlighted, but even in, amongst other city managers, amongst other city management, the fact that you've only been here for such a short period of time, and I hear your name throughout the circles, and in a very positive way, I think says a lot also about the work you've been able to do, so thank you for that. Not even a question, I really feel like we should be able to do more. We don't want you to be poached, we want you to stay here, so we want to keep you happy, and I definitely support the proposal that's put forth tonight.
Agreed with everything that was just said by my three colleagues, and I think that the only thing, you know, I'll just add a, a different angle. I've been asked over these past few months, more than I ever have in my life, how would you solve governmental problems, you know, big governmental problems, and one of my main answers is always hiring the right staff. And I always think about Gabe when I'm giving that answer, because I do think that, you know, a city is really, a city manager runs city, is really only as good as its city manager and its staff. And I do think that we made just such a, you know, I'm going to pat ourselves on the back, we made such a good decision by hiring Gabe, and I think it was a pretty crystal clear decision at the time, but I've said this before, it's rare when someone actually exceeds your expectations. I mean, we had pretty high expectations for Gabe, and Gabe actually did exceed them. And so, you know, I do think that this is a, I think it's, we should be doing more, I really do. To me, the longer that we can keep Gabe in the city, the better it is, not only for that year, it really is generational. I mean, I think some of the things that we're doing, you know, our kids and, and for the next 10 or 15 years, they're going to see the fruits of this, because I think we're putting the city just in such good position when it comes to water, when it comes to ongoing financial liability, when it comes to instituting, you know, ways in which we actually just run each department. So I selfishly want to keep Gabe here as long as possible, and this is just one way of doing it. I know, you know, 5 percent isn't relatively all that much, but I think, you know, for the city of this size, I think it's, you know, hopefully it's a sign of our appreciation, and I think it's well deserved. So I'm honored to, and very happy to be able to, to vote for this. So with that, we'll take a, a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
And all those in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're here.
And any items for future agendas in the new year? And hearing none, Happy New Year to everyone. We'll take a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. Second, all those in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.